Are we prepared to begin? Are we recording?
Yes, we're recording.
Okay. Okay, it's 4:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Beatty County Board of Education Finance Committee to order. Everyone, let's stand for the president.
The President says, "To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
The present at our meeting today are Finance Committee members, Colonel Guyer and Dr. Wizneski. CFO Tanya Crosby is with us, along with Teri Bennett is here today to present. Other board members present, John Dowey and Earl Campbell. Do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
She'll move.
Okay. Discussion, I would just move our impact of having not having a grant writer first today for discussion. So that, Teri, if you have any other commitments that you'd like to make.
I'm good, I'm good.
We're going to put you first, are you?
Well, I'm not actually presenting, but I mean...
Oh, gotcha. Questions?
He's just here if we have additional questions.
Okay, so with that minor edit to the agenda, all in favor of approving the agenda, the vote is 3-0. Robin, are there any public comments today? No. No public comments today. So, actually, our first order of business is the approval of our March 14th and our April 11th minutes. I move to take off the table our March 14th minutes for approval at this board meeting. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second, all in favor? The vote is 3-0. Okay. I move that we approve the March 14th minutes with the edits made.
Second.
Second by Mr. Guyer, all in favor, 3-0. I move we approve the April 11th minutes.
Second.
Second by Dr. Wizneski, all in favor? The vote is 3-0. Robin, can we count on you to upload both of those sets of minutes by tomorrow to our website? They'll be uploading it. Thank you so much. All right, our first topic today, Tanya, impact of having not having a grant writer. This was Dr. Wizneski's request for this, and I'm looking forward to hearing it.
So, at the last meeting, or we've discussed in a couple of meetings about what the impact of not having a grant writer. And so, just to provide some background information, we had an internal grant writer employed at the district part-time from 2009 to 2011, and then was made full-time in 2011 through 2015. I provided the annual salary here, including benefits. And over that period of time, I provided a backup document of, this was just in our file, it was requested long ago. It was not something we created recently, and so it has some pending items listed there. But in general, it gave you an idea of what the grants were, they were applied for, and then awarded. 8.7 during the period of her employment were applied, and then 6 million of them were awarded. So, that gave you an idea of that number. Of both of those numbers included in those is the $2.7 million state fiscal stabilization formula. That was when the, in the Obama administration. It was one of the federal stabilization awards that were given to school districts. It was a one-time fund. And so, it was an allocation, not really a grant, but this grant writer was responsible for developing the proposal to submit, to receive the funds, and then the plan to move forward. So, also, on this document is grants written and awarded so far, just this year, about a million dollars. And three of them included the SARA grant, the Center for Education Recruitment and Retention. That is the additional supplement that's going to critical needs teachers. And it's in certain categories of certified employees. That one's for $925,000.
Who's that from? I mean, who sponsors that?
The state. That center is a state organization, is that correct, Teri?
It's housed and went through a bit, it is a state organization.
And I believe we received the grant last year. It applied for several pots, it was multiple pots of money, multiple grants that had to be written. And once we found that we were successful on one, our recruiter went back and applied for a couple more and was awarded several of them. So, we were fortunate to get that. We got it again this year. So, the human resources, the teacher recruitment and retention officer, who are director, I'm not sure her title.
Coordinator.
Coordinator is in the human resources department. Also, the SREB grant is a Southern Regional Education Board. It too was written and received this year of $110,000. Teri could probably give you more information about what SREB is. And in general, Teri, what is the consensus of the...
I'm good, but it's generally more for our secondary schools and for them to, it's very PD oriented, and basically giving them a focus of what they need to be working on. So, it's, there's a lot of professional development.
Okay.
Can I ask, who is the Southern Regional Education Board?
They actually used to be our accreditation board at one point, but now they've gotten out of the accreditation business and they're doing more pro education. I'm not, I don't know a lot about their philosophy or parts or whatever.
So, they're private nonprofit?
Uh, no, I don't know. I would think that they were a proper nonprofit, yes, yes, I do, I think so, you're right.
And then the SOS, it was a Fuel Food, 60 Food Service Grant, and it was, this grant was to improve healthy eating and physical activity. So, this grant was written by Dan Coa in the Food Service Office. So, the SREB grant was written by Nikki Campbell, is what I'm understanding, in Instructional Services. So, a variety of folks are working on grants as they become available. Teri is notified of them and make sure that anyone who is in that particular area is notified of any grant opportunities. So, there probably, I am certain there are many small grants that are written at the school level, and teacher grants that are written with the community foundation, Low Country, so they write mini grants with them as well, which are a couple thousand dollars a piece usually, so. So, that's all I have here. I do have some other comments about grant writing, and I, just really one. And although there is research about having an internal person versus a consultant, we actually, when this grant writer actually left, we went out for bid on a grant writer in 2015. Back then, three years ago, very little response, and the responses that we got were very, very expensive, and they were fixed costs, which I was surprised to see. They normally, it would be, you would think a percentage of the grant. These were a range of $5,000 to $25,000 for writing a grant. If they were unsuccessful, they would go back and write it in extra time for free to try to secure the grant the following time. So, the response was very minimal and very expensive, so at that time, there was a decision made to not to go forward with that. So, it hasn't been explored, to my knowledge, again, as far as either outsourcing or hiring since that time.
So, this list that you provided here, page two of two in the presentation, this is an old, old list. And I know that only because I see some of the names on here are folks that have long And Teri, your role, you were our previous grant writer, how?
Never been there.
Never been there.
No.
So, what was your involvement in that? I know you were involved in some ways.
Well, one of my titles, which we joke about, we don't know what my real title is, but one of the titles is Director of Grants Management. So, I handle all the compliance and the fiscal responsibilities once we receive the money. I do help and assist with writing, but mainly, my job is, I mean, I joke that my job should be compliance and monitor, and that nature better. And we already get a large number of allocations from the federal and state government, which I also manage as well. So, we get, I mean, like, for example, that SARA grant is one, but we get, there were nine different pots of money that came in. Community Foundation just sent us a check for $22,000, that was probably 25 teachers that got, you know, so we have to manage each and every individual one at every school to make sure there's compliance. So, but, you know, because more, my role is more on the federal and state side. But I do, when we get any of these other grants, because a lot of the grants are many times federal and state in orientation as well, like 21st Century, we had at one point for, or let's say we had like Joint Strike, those many times are we federal source, so we're obviously the office that manages that for them.
Thank you.
Past experience at a university, we went on a contract. All contracts had a certain amount of fixed cost, because they're going to demand that. But most of the revenue for that firm came from, as a percentage of grants that they bring in. They improved our grant total by about a factor of five in the first year. Because they went beyond the educational realm and reached out to private companies and other folks that the previous grant writer was an education person, and so his grant expertise was in the education realm. That was Seattle, though, and there's, you know, so there's a lot of talent there, and there's a lot of firms that do this for a lot of folks. So, we had many multiple bids for it. I would really strongly recommend, four years ago, and a lot has changed, I know personally a number of retired grant writers that are living in the area, D'Atah and Spring Island and other places, that tell me, you know, and that's all luck tickets, you never know for sure, but that seems to be, it might be worth trying again. But cast a wider net for grant writers beyond the educational oriented grant writers. We did this with the friends of Hunting Island as well, and we opened up some grants that we didn't even know that we had, because we had a very aggressive person, who since now has moved on, but she was able to find a lot of grants in other ways. I'm not looking to replace anybody's job, and compliance, as any incumbent funds, especially federal and state, you've got to really watch compliance. Other grants from companies you do, but not to the same legal extent that you do at the federal and state. So, my recommendation is that we report to the board that we explore the possibility of contracting grant writing, the grant writing function for the next fiscal year. Explore, that'd be a recommendation.
Explore, just say, just practice it with I'm, and we've got a motion.
Okay. I move that we recommend to the board that we explore the possibility of hiring a consultant or a contractor to provide grants for schools.
I'll second. Discussion.
I'd actually like to amend it, to just explore the possibility, besides just contractors, but just to go out for bid for it, and to see what we can get. And I don't think we should restrict it just to those, but for to anything, because based on looking at the cost benefit, I mean, the benefit of one, right now, in our situation, we really use one, the investment in, you know, whether it be a part-time or a full-time person, it's huge.
That's a good point. And, you know, this was triggered by the discussion about Kate, and going out to local businesses to help sponsor Kate. That person could do that function as well. It's not really fair for the director of Kate to be going out there and knocking on doors and trying to get death funds. That's what a professional salesperson does. So, it has a wider range, just right than the traditional grants that we've been looking at.
So, I'll second that amendment. Can we repeat the motion? I want you to say it again. Just once, it was the amendment.
So, the amendment was to, I guess, to explore going out for bid on a, either a contractual or an internal hire of a grant writer.
Internal hire.
Or individual.
Right, individual, yeah. I don't know what it looks like, but I just know that that number supports it.
So, discussion. So, what we're doing is recommending to the full board that we direct procurement to submit a...
A pressure proposal?
An RFP, would that be an RFP for...
Possibly not an RFP, but a bid. There are different types, but we'll have to determine which ones that this one do.
They would determine that, yes. So, the direction is really to procurement, and we would make this recommendation to the full board.
Can I ask one question? With regard to recurring, do we know how many of that list that you provided have dropped off?
Yes, I can go down and tell you, at least some of the major ones. In particular, number 15 is Prime, the Foreign Language Assistant, that's the Chinese program. So, that one is still, the grant is gone, and we had part of the grant, many of the larger grants in particular, provide for a sustainability program. So, we are funding 100% of that program now in the general fund. So, when the funds go away, we either decide to either continue the program using your own dollars, or find other funding sources, or eliminate the program, or phase it out in some way. That one has remained since its time. Also, I don't believe on the Math and Science Partnership, I don't believe we're doing that one anymore. That was a targeted professional development, just for math and science teachers, and it was a cohort of teachers that were meeting on the weekends to learn more specific areas. State fiscal stabilization, one-time pot of money, I think we purchased laptops, student devices with that, and possibly some software back in that period of time. I don't recall exactly what was purchased. Joint Strike began at CUSA in Broad River. I know that CUSA used these funds for the Leader and Me program. So, that was when, in the beginnings of the Leader and Me program with CUSA. I don't know what, in particular, the DOE at-risk students was for. ADD, that grant ended, and that program's not, we've not been participating in that for several years, so. So, at least two numbers we have.
I just have a process question. Should the board accept this recommendation? Typically, we just, the recommendation stops with directing a procurement department to put out the request for a proposal or the bid or what have you. But that's typically where it stops. We don't add input as to what that might include, what that might look like, or what details might be in there. So, you had quite a bit to offer in regard to folks that you know, and Rachel, this was your proposed topic. Ideally, what might, you might like to see in that advertisement that goes out? Some just early suggestions that you might have.
Well, I think it depends on if it's a individual or if it's a company. So, if it's a company, I mean, I'd want to know what they've secured, and individual also, you know. What's their space? What's their general space that they've worked in for, whether or not it's education, or if it's somewhere else? And then what their success rate has been like, you know, on average, what they bring in? And of course, if it is fixed rate or percentage, you know.
And you mentioned that we would want them to not only look at anything that applies to our educational programs, but well beyond them. So, not just very limited to that. That would, you know, preferably be identified in there.
Right, right. You can help write that.
Yeah. And again, this is all assuming the board accepts this. Any more discussion? All in favor of the revised motion? 3-0. That's nice, thank you. It's a pleasure. Okay. All right, where's my agenda? There with me here. Okay, let's move on to the next topic. Our IB program audit. This was another request by Dr. Wizneski. Obviously, we're not just zeroing in on our IB program, but eventually, we'll take a look at a variety of other programs throughout the district. So, this is, just happens to be one on the list of more to come. Tanya?
Yes, so we provided a two-year comparison, one for the completed year of 2018, 2017, 2018 school year, and then dollars expended as of March 19th, 2019. And IB is primarily at three schools, Hilton Head Elementary, Hilton Head Elementary, Hilton Head Elementary, and there are some district office expenses, and they are to primarily pay for the dues for the entire program, for each of the programs. And there may be professional development that's paid at the district level as well, so district office expenses would be professional development for the program and the school staff. There are, at the elementary school, there is, I believe, a half-time, it's a half-time employee, so it's a primary year, it's a PYP Coordinator, Primary Years Program, and the other half of her job, I believe, is an instructional coach, or she has another portion of the job, so this is a half of the position. Same thing with Hilton Head Middle School, there's an NYPD Coordinator. The other half is funded through their district, through the allocation that's given on staffing allocation. And then, same thing with the high school, there is a portion of a position there as well. So, the total spending for 2018 was $281,000, and so far, as of this year, was $211,000. I asked Mr. Bennett to find some information for me today, and how many students are participating in IB? And I got some information that 350 students, if you look, that would be school-wide program, that would include, that was it, program this year. So, Teri, that was in grades 11 and 12?
Yes, and of course, they could have participated in one class, and they could have participated in that class in the first semester.
So, grades 11 and 12, at least 350 students, at least one class.
Yes.
And then, 25 attempts to receive an IB diploma this year, and 16 have received a diploma. And the elementary school and the middle school, they are school-wide programs, as well as grades nine and 10 in high school. So, there are thousands of students in that. I don't have the exact numbers with me today, so.
So, there's been 16 awarded from just this school year?
Yes.
Now, obviously, if we were to delve into the specifics of, you know, the program itself, we're overstepping, and that's clearly a discussion for our academics committee. But are there any additional questions about what Tanya brought to us?
I just have one. Under Hilton Head Middle, so I noticed for all of them, their salaries go into purchase services supplies. Hilton Head Middle, though, does not have any supply costs listed. Were there, are there none?
There weren't any as of March 19th. Now, they may have been, they may not have coded them specifically to the project code that we assigned. I mean, I could certainly contact them and see if they know of any specific supplies. But we do, long ago, when we began the program, we did establish, well, we established a project code, but the State Department, just a couple of years ago, established a program code, which makes things easier for us. Yet, instead of, program code would be more like kindergarten, elementary, high school vocational, so it makes it much more streamlined, and so they're almost forced to use the right code. So, now, we are able to capture that information a little better, so. But if they had made purchase supplies for, maybe in a combination with others, they may have coded them to another specific area, but this account is specifically for IB, so, you know, we can contact them, but we didn't see any at the elementary or the middle level as of this point this year, either.
And what would under Hilton Head High, other objects?
I can't say specifically. It may have been some kind of fee, or it could have been...
I think it's something that had to do with the...
Could be anything from testing fees to do...
That's what I'm thinking, the testing fees for the...
That's very possible. Usually, other objects is something that doesn't fit in a service or a supply, it's sort of a miscellaneous, so if it doesn't fit in the other categories, then we normally code it to the other objects. Fees are a good, fees and dues are two of the most commonly used accounts.
Very cool. So, you go first, some other questions?
You know, obviously, kind of like the Leader and Me program, I don't want to get into what is the academic benefit of the research, that's not how I would approve it. But I am, and the Finance Committee should look at return on investment. And at 350 students, $200,000 spent so far, that's $603 per student. And people wanting to put priorities on achievement gap, this doesn't do much for that, that I can see, but I, you know, again, I don't know enough about the program and the academics. But the same thing I would say about the Leader and Me program, as I would say here, in a resource constrained environment, I'm wondering if this program could be a Bud Light version? In other words, do you have to spend this amount of money every year? Or is it so, in the culture of the school now, that in a constrained environment, you could cut down the amount that you spend and still have the program be viable? And that's a dollar and cent, and that's a finance, as far as I'm concerned. But it has, I don't know what the academic impact of that is.
I think, well, you said 350 students in grades 11 through 12, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then, that would be at the high school level.
Yes, so we have to add 1,000 students at Hilton Head Middle.
1,000 students, so it's going to be...
So, it's more, so that 600, it's less than that, yeah.
Yeah, less than, yeah, okay.
I know IB's bigger since I was there, which is when it's like started. So, I mean, it is very much ingrained in that, in Hilton Head schools, yeah.
Culture, yeah.
And I, I don't know, Tanya, you probably have to correct me on that, but with regard to like cutting it down and stuff like that, I think that IB requires, like, the IB program requires certain things in order for you to graduate with it, or not, so I don't know if it's possible or not, but that is something for academics that are going to look at.
It is. So, a couple things about the IBO defines the Primary Years Program via an age group, so those that are 3 through 12 years old. And the Middle Years Program is, what is it, 11 to 16, or 15 years old? And the Diploma Program, you're eligible to participate in 16 years of age through 19. But we have sort of divided it out cleanly between schools, but the program operates a little bit different. So, does the... So does the, does the, um, the IB, the World program, um, do they allow us to break up our, our money in this fashion, or?
Um, well, this is how we, our financial software and and State Department really allow us to break it out of our accounts. We have to provide by location. We have to provide by, uh, the program code, which is, um, specific in the financial handbook. If it, if we were to specify by primary years, middle years, or diploma, that would be a whole separate, we could add a project code to it. The challenge with that is, again, making sure that the person coding the invoice or the payment is accurately recording it to the one of those programs. So it was just a training, it would be a training opportunity for them. Um, but, um, this, this is half, sort of half, we're following the State Department coding system here.
For the coding system. So I just want to make sure that we're not overpaying in in some areas because of that over lack of schools. Um, another thing is, you know, one thing I know, just only because my kids attended Hilton Head High, is that they are combining a lot of those IB and honors classes and IB and AP classes if all of the, you know, um, subject matter aligns. And so I'm wondering if, are there any cost savings there, if that's the case? Um, again, I don't know how, I went to the IB, the World website, and they provide some background on how the programs are structured. So every year IB, um, tells us how much it's going to cost to run the diploma program. They tell us how much it's going to cost, and so they they send us that information.
They do, they invoice us. I'm looking at a list of invoices now for International Baccalaureate, and they, we're in the district office. These dues and fees total three, 111, 371, and those were all the dues for IB this year.
Plus that annual. Looks like it actually went down.
Yes, I'd have to pull the individual invoices to see exactly if there were any. One was an annual registration fee, um, one's PYP, PYP annual payment fee was 8,520. Uh, the annual registration fee for 2019 was 65,318 dollars.
And that's fixed regardless of how many students participate in the invoice. So I understood that makes it a little more clear. Um, our return on investment, I hear what Dick is saying. Uh, it's hard to investigate that without stepping into.
Unless academics.
You know, the academics committee.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We probably should do a total number of students that are participating, though, just so that you can't crunch out that number. But Dick was trying to figure out is how much per student, you know, kind of a cost.
I know, and that's tricky, um.
Unless we, I mean, I think if we know that there's 350 at Hilton Head High, you could take kind of this this figure, this year-to-date number expanded, you can kind of figure it out at the high school level. So then if we knew how many middle and elementary, we could figure it out based on these.
Right. Um, at the high school level, um, there are, I think the number was 25 who had committed to the full IB diploma program. Is that correct? Okay, and that was last year?
Um, 25 is counted this year.
I think it's last year's results from the website, but I have time.
Okay, and so what that means is those 25 students have made a commitment to fully participate with the whole IB package. Um, all the other numbers inside the school could just be taking one IB class. Um, so so you really, at the high school level, have to drill down and figure out how many kids are actually participating in what, you know, many believe is the true value of the diploma program um, at the high school level.
I have enrollment counts for Hilton Head Elementary. As of 45th day of the 2018-19 school year was 896 students. Um, and then Hilton Head Middle was 1,021.
And it's down to 350 at the high school.
And I just want to remember ninth and 10th grade are part of the middle school program year, so you have to count that entire population of ninth and 10th grade.
And so I have to break out the grade levels, nine, 10 at the high school.
I don't condition them.
That's what you were touching on.
Yeah, so anybody within the ages of 11 through 16 falls into the middle years program and that 1,021 number. And of course, our middle school, everybody who attends the middle school participates in that program. Everybody who attends Hilton Head Elementary participates in that program. It's not until you get to the high school where it really differs.
And what? What is the performance of people that have the International Baccalaureate degree? I mean, do they get into better colleges? Do they get more scholarships? That's, that's, again, a return on investment that I'm kind of interested in, which is not academics, I want results.
I hear you. So the people and I, the IB people, the IB cheerleaders say that it's the rigor of the program. It's the way the program's structured and the product it produces, which is a well-grounded student. There's a, there's an activity piece that you must participate in, a creativity piece, and you have to commit to this if you commit to the two-year diploma program, which is for 16 through 19 year olds, you know, your juniors and. So, um, yeah, I think the colleges do, um, look at them and receive them differently. Because of the rigorous program they go through regardless of whether they achieve the diploma or not.
I mean, say, look, it says it's indicated on your transcript, whether or not, it says like AP, some sort of indicator, you get an IB level class, so it's considered like an honors class. And then you also get, you know, like the community service type aspects.
Yeah.
So acceptance should be greater to the college of your choice, and hopefully retention, unless they're in college, is greater and so forth. Do we have data?
I don't know if we have data, that's a question for I S D, I think. But, um, some of the IB courses, the higher-level courses, you can earn college credit. And there's standard level, which are not crediting or any of that. So, I mean, I, the question is being brought up before, um, where's the true value? If you ever had to scale back on this program, where would you do it? Um, I would never want to see us sacrifice our diploma program. But what few people don't realize is you don't need to participate in a primary years program and a middle school program in order to be successful or get into the diploma program. You just need to be academically prepared for the rigors that come with that. So, you know, that may be a question for the academics committee. Are we receiving, are we getting that return at the elementary and middle level? I don't know, I don't know. But certainly at the high school, I would hate to see that ever, um, be cast aside because it's a, it's a rigorous program for our higher achieving students. So that's just not. All right. Tanya, thank you for this. Um, any other questions on this topic or input? All right, let's see here. All right, let's move on to our, um, last and final topic for this evening, our procurement card controls. And I just want to add that, um, Dr. Brodsky has joined us, and Billy Saunders has joined us in the meantime. Tanya, are you doing this presentation or?
Yes, I was trying, are you all having word docs that the, um, other folks in the room cannot see it? So I was going to copy it to my, um, drive here and try to get it displayed up on the screen.
Take your time.
They're wrong. I'm not, I haven't been trained on these yet. Obviously, I need to be.
Tanya, Chad said if you practice in here, you'll be ready for out there.
Oh.
He's going to have someone here, but.
The touchscreen, there's no touchscreen.
I can't seem to find them on the list of items here for some strange reason. So I may just have to do it verbally. Yeah.
There it is.
Wow, look at that. All right, this is one to be a learning opportunity, Terry. That's one of my favorite terms, and every time in the department cringes when I say I have a learning opportunity for them. So, okay, so we are going to talk about the internal controls over the P card. Um, I've done some, a similar presentation, um, many times over the years, and, um, this, we did have a few updates on it this year. So in general, the internal control, just to sort of describe what an, what an internal control is, it is a series of ongoing actions and activities that occur throughout the operations. Terry's a good example, compliance, we're constantly monitoring, and we have a process developed to go through multiple steps of approvals, uh, multiple people, there's a segregation of duties, um, to make sure that not one person has the authority over any particular area, that multiple eyes are watching. So people are what make internal controls work, and no matter how well they're designed and operated, they only provide a reasonable assurance that district objectives are met, not an absolute objective, um, not an absolute assurance. So, uh, benefits of the P card include eliminating inefficiencies of paper-based payments. They have a time savings of making purchases for, from a cardholder's perspective. Um, they have, we have one electronic P card payment as opposed to 15,000 checks to individual vendors, um, and more secure than writing checks. Uh, checks have bank account numbers and routing numbers at the bottom of them, so they can easily be stolen and used and, uh, funds and account numbers or, um, excuse me, uh, names of the, we've seen fraudulent charges come through on checks in the past where someone just changed the vendor name and replaced it with their own. Or, um, it was, uh, or the dollar amount was actually changed. So a couple of extra zeros added to so that they could benefit from school district funding. Um, so it is another, you know, checks aren't the, um, end-all, be-all of, of security measures as well. So they are efficient, and they're automated, and they allow us a database of capturing the information and slicing it and dicing it in many different ways. One great example is the transparency report. We extract the data, we also extract it from the check writing system, and we merge the data of the two information together, and then sort it by alphabetical order each month and and just select a certain date range. So we're able to use it in that manner. We sort it by dollar amount, and we'll make sure that anything over 2,500 has three quotes, and anything over another threshold has this, and anything over 100,000 goes in a report to the board. So we're able to manage the database in that fashion. And, um, then we can also improve our cash forecasting because we can look from month to month what levels of cash we're spending at certain times and make sure we have forecasted. Uh, we have to notify the treasurer's office, for example, we have to provide a, a several-month forecast of the cash that we're going to need so that they can pull down money from our pooled investments. Our, um, the county treasurer holds all of our cash, and we have to request that cash to come to the school district. So every payday, every AP run, so once a week, uh, we have an accounts payable pay run. We have to make a request, we call a warrant, request those funds for the exact amount of the bills that we're paying. So we've spent a million dollars, we ask for a million dollars, and they wire into our accounts. On payday, we do the same, we might spend $3 million, and we have to request the same. So they want to know, is there going to be an anomaly, anomaly in our cash requests or warrants so that they can, uh, more in advance, uh, request that the money be taken out of the investments, like the local government investment pool or Morgan Stanley investment account, and move it into a bank account available to be wired to us? So cash forecasting is a lot of what we are managing as well. And, um, that should say transparent C with a Y instead of E. So basic elements, we do have policies and procedures, uh, and we do, um, have segregation of duties, including a system of authorization and record-keeping procedures. Uh, we have ongoing training, and we have sound practices that are followed by our personnel. And we have quality personnel who are knowledgeable in the areas of responsibility. Our bookkeepers receive periodic training on the P card, and the principal and the cardholder must sign a cardholder agreement, or the bookkeeper must sign a cardholder agreement, saying that they've read the policies and that they agree to adhere to them, uh, and they acknowledge and receipt of them. So. All right, so the evolution of the P card. Um, we really evolved to this because, uh, we had vendors that were beginning to no longer accept checks. Um, we have, they wouldn't, for some vendors, no longer receives purchase orders as well. Um, they have, purchase orders have now sort of become a archaic method of doing business as far as, you know, giving the vendor a purchase order number, they would rather have payment. Uh, society has sort of evolved into the electronic era, and 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 credit cards have become a way of life. So, uh, the program was, Bank of America's P card program was selected by the state as a, as the, as the state's preferred vendor. So we updated this, uh, for the, this period is July 1 through June 30, 2018. That was the end of the last fiscal year. And so we captured the information. Um, these are the top 10 highest vendors, uh, where we spend the most money, um, on the P card. And the top one is HP Direct, um, that is for the student and teacher laptop devices. Uh, Panallectra Co-op is the southern part of this side of the county, our utility service. Uh, HPE is servers and, uh, switches and IT, uh, things that are over my head. Um, things that make a network work behind the scenes. Uh, Hargray is our telecommunications, um, and Progressive is, hmm, I had a listing on that one, but.
Progressive Communications.
Yes. I I have to come back to that one, I can't remember what that one is. Uh, the Greenery is our, one of our grounds contractors, Howard Technology, uh, installed, and we purchased these boards through them. Uh, Waste Pro is our, this waste disposal, and New Idea is our furniture supplier. So anytime we buy furniture, like these, these desks, are probably bought from New Idea.
What about Brightview?
Brightview, um, oh, Brightview is also a grounds, um, they do athletic grounds. So you will see them often, um, I see them almost every morning as I drop my child off at Beaufort Middle, and they're cutting grass in the football fields and baseball fields and lining, they're responsible for lining the fields as well before games. Um, so I want to go back, the total of these, total for all vendors is 31.9 million. This is, um, I added this up the other day, this is eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, about $13 million right here. So almost half of the spending that we have is with these top 10 vendors. And we strategically, um, made these purchases with with those vendors so that we could maximize the funding, and all of these purchases are made at the district level. So we control the spending there and make sure that we're coding everything properly at each individual school.
Tanya, you spin just a future, I'm looking at last year's tough in vendors versus this year. And I can wait till the end of your presentation, it looks like there's been some changes.
Probably.
I'll wait till the end.
Yeah, Howard Technology is a new vendor because we went out and, um, the board approved a two-year phase-in of the new boards, so that's one of the differences I think you'll see.
Gotcha, and and some others that were, that don't make the list this year, um, like Source for Teachers.
Uh, Source for Teachers no longer accepts the P card.
Ah, interesting.
So we are paying by check.
Okay.
They, many vendors have a large credit card fee when they are receiving funds. There is a credit card or a percentage and it's generally, it can be negotiated with the bank or the credit card, whoever's holding that credit card. And unfortunately, the costs were so high for them that they chose not to participate anymore and asked us to only pay by check, so that's how we. Or electronic funds transfer, aren't we? I think we're doing an electronic funds transfer instead, which would also show up in the transparency report.
Okay, and just a couple others, Follett.
Follett, School Library Supplies and also the Destiny software for libraries. So we need, all of our laptops and electronic devices are inventoried through the Destiny software and that is through Follett.
Okay, that fell off the list, they're not one of our top 10 anymore. And then BSN Sports Supply Group is no longer on that list.
I'm not sure what time period that one was, but it could have been a year with a new school and a new school, we would have made huge purchases for, for example, if it was during the May River or River Ridge timeframe, a large number of uniforms, football equipment, all the sports equipment that was used to purchase, was purchased for a new school could have been in that timeframe.
It was 2018.
No?
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, well, we, well, we have, you know, six high schools, they could have made centrally at that time. I don't know, I'd have to check into it, they could have been on state contract that year and everyone was centralizing to that vendor or they may have fallen just off the top 10 list, but we'll check on that. So this is the history of spending. We began in 2006 with the program and had no rebates for the first couple of years. I think we had 25,000 that first year and then it's grown to a rebate, a spending level, excuse me, of, were about 31 million and we strategically, for some reason, I had some extra. In here, this big spike is utilities, we started adding Pannelectric Co-op. S C E and G does not allow the P card to be received as payment. And then our computers as well, so technology purchases would have made that large uptick in the spending at that point. And then substitutes was in earlier and now they've fallen off, so that won't be contributing to any recent uptick. This is not displaying the full document, so, because I have all the way out through FY 18.
Maybe if you hit play and do it like, play, because it's a regular slideshow.
Like a PowerPoint.
Say current page.
Current page.
Yay.
Still didn't go.
I'm not sure why, it's not showing full size.
On the printout, it shows to 2017.
Yeah, yeah, that's the most recently completed year and then the 2018, the cycle of P card goes through August. So we wanted to capture the most completed fiscal year.
So food services added?
Let me grab my PowerPoint there.
Food was added.
Food catering services, if the food was purchased, it was allowed to be purchased on the P card at that point. Prior to that, it was not allowed to be used on the P card.
So what kind of food service?
So the, if Robin was to purchase Cheez-Its and water and Coke's and she was, went to Walmart to purchase those, she could purchase that on the P card. Or if there was a caterer for a board meeting or a community meeting or a professional development meeting, then that could be used to pay for the catering service.
So Tanya, whose decision was that to make that change? Is that in our procurement code?
No, the procurement code really doesn't get to that level. It was an internal decision, most likely at the senior leadership level at that time to be able to expand it in order to expand our rebates really. So it was a, might have been, I would assume it would be a suggestion from the procurement office in order to increase rebates and then it would have been improved at the senior level. So that was really before, several years ago.
The motivation behind it?
Yes, the motivation is to expand the rebates and maximize them when we, when possible, when still have tight controls over them. Food is only allowed for purposes of either professional development. So we have to have a sign-in sheet and an agenda and Title I parenting is one example. So when schools have a Title I parenting meeting, which is a requirement of Title I, then they can buy food and have that at a meeting or a parent night. So we only allow it for parent nights, like ESOL or Title I parent nights or for professional development. So we had relatively, I believe there were tight restrictions on the food, so it wouldn't just be purchased for any reason at all, so. All right, so this is the progression of rebates that we've had over the last several years and the grand total of these years over about 10 years is 1.7 million dollars. So the most recent year completed, the rebate received was 420,000 dollars. Okay, this is a new slide. This was data that I thought was important to show. We contacted Bank of America and said, please let us know some of our surrounding counties and school districts, what kind of spending they have, particularly Charleston, Greenville, Rock Hill. So we do have some upstate as well and how many active cards do they have? Actually, that is, oh, this, are we on that one? Yes. Okay, so we are the fourth one down here at 44 cards and spending is projected at that time, 33 million dollars. So as you can see of the list, we have anywhere from 41 million down to 1 million. We have the least amount of cards of any of these on the listing. There was 387 cards at Charleston County School District. Let's see one that's close to our level of spending. Greenville has a similar amount of spending with 436 cards. So as you can see, I was pretty shocked by the comparison, how few we had compared to somebody else. And we have one per school, we have one per department and so each department and the district office would have one as well, so, or one card. So this is a listing of that. We have minimized them down, there had been two cards in a department, we have minimized them to each to one. Technology is a good example, they had one for the phones, phone system telecommunications and then another for everything else, so we asked them to consolidate and just go to one card. So Human Resources had one for normal operations and another one for sled checks. I'm not sure what the reasoning behind that, but we consolidated those down to one. So we have one card per school and department, district office department.
Tanya, how did you get those numbers for each of those districts? How did you find out?
We called Bank of America and after, emailed them and asked them to provide us the information. I have a listing of probably many others, I just pulled the top, several that were in. But I have a listing probably pages long of all of the different ones throughout the state.
It is shocking, that's upsetting, what I'm seeing, but.
Yeah, so, but I was happy to see that the level of spending that we have, that we have fewer cards than anyone. So this was, that was very telling for me and I thought it was important to share with you. And so now we get to the controls, I know you've been waiting for that. So we have policies and procedures, first of all. We have a P card policy and we do, it hasn't been updated in about two years as far as, we haven't expanded any items or we, but any major updates would be made, they would be approved by me, I would run them by the superintendent, so no major changes have been made in the last few years. Those provide for restrictions and in fact, today, I was on the thing, on the website looking at it and there is a specific column, a specific page, page seven, I believe it was, it talks about prohibited uses of the card. Gift cards is on the top of my list, no P, no gift cards. So that is, that's something out there and we do train on that periodically with our bookkeepers. Rules over issuance of the card, we have 44 cards, we want to keep that to a minimum. So we have to, they have to get authorization, if anyone requests a card, it gets authorization from a senior level, me myself. And then if I, I don't see, I haven't received any of those requests since I've actually been in this position. So in two years, I have not received any requests for new cards. A new school would be addition to a new card, that sort of thing. Segregation of duties, we have, every school has a series of processes they must go through to make a purchase on the P card. They have to fill out the pre-authorization form, so they fill out a form, they attach the quote and the principal must sign prior to the purchase being made. So there are physical controls of the card as well, the card has to be kept in a locked drawer and when we get on-site visits, we look for that, so we want to know that it's being secured. We have, we talked about pre-authorization and then we have MCC code blocks, those are merchant codes. We actually go into the Bank of America work system and we recently updated our blocks to ensure that certain items, alcohol, firearms, those sorts of things are checked so that they should, the system should block from any use. The system is only as good as the programming of the credit card machine that's being received. So if the credit card, if we, if gasoline is blocked, but at the gas pump, the machine is programmed as a retail store, as a convenience store and not a gasoline vendor, then it could allow it to go through. So it's only as good as the programming of the machine and how the codes are installed on the vendor's end. And then we have auditing. We audit every transaction, we have one employee who, at the district level, who audits every single transaction every month. It takes her entire job and if there is a problem with the transaction, it's flagged. So she checks it, flags it and then sends it to the bookkeeper that is in charge of the transaction to provide additional information, answer a question or to any number of things. So these are lists of blocked, conflicted charges. Alcohol, entertainment, family gift cards, personal memberships, jewelry donations, hazardous materials, bars and clubs, telephone calls, weapons and ammunition, casinos, cash withdrawals. And again, the complete list is on the procurement, the P card policy manual. So the duties of making P card purchases and reviewing, or improving those purchases are segregated among the cardholder, the cardholder designated and the administrator. So they are the person who, the bookkeeper is the cardholder. The administrator is on-site as well and if the card is checked out, for example, the culinary arts teacher needs to go make a purchase of food for the culinary arts program, then he will be the cardholder designated, he will get, he will do the purchase request, get it signed off on by the principal and then returns the card and receipt with the transaction. So a receipt is required for every, every purchase, all purchases. Some bookkeepers do not allow, especially at the elementary level, sometimes at the high school level, they may have to, in some cases, have the card checked out. Some bookkeepers do not allow anyone in the school to check out, they must make all purchases. All purchases require written approval prior to any purchase and documentation must be on file with the final invoice to show accountability. So physical controls, the P card information containing an account number and expiration dates must be safeguarded and it must be maintained in a locked area under the custody of the cardholder. And P cards no longer in use are forwarded to our office and we cut them up and destroy them. So there are transaction limits, they are $2,500 per transaction or $2,500 per vendor per day and limits may be lifted if there is proof of quotes, bids or exemptions. So we'll not allow the P card, if I tried to take a P card and go out to Walmart and spend $2,501, the transaction would be blocked unless I got prior approval and requested a limit lift to be made prior to me going to the, to the store. Thank you. I have to approve any transactions greater than 25,000 and new, new policy was that board must now approve transactions greater than 0.1% of the total budget. I don't know, I don't think I'm gonna be able to do this. It's not a good sign. Terry, you think you could pick up two slides? How many uses of the cards or computers, whiteboards, furniture, testing materials, instructional supplies, office supplies and utility bills. The flow of the transactions. Employee must have, request an item to be purchased, must follow the rules of procurement and get written pre-authorization. You know, the bookkeeper and employee must make the authorized purchase and then provide a receipt to the bookkeeper after the purchase. The purchase and its information must be documented in a log kept by the bookkeeper. So the bookkeeper keeps a log of every transaction and then they can log when the item is actually received. So when they receive goods, they indicate it in that log. The bookkeeper then reconciles all the transactions and works. They should be in work every single day looking at transactions. They can, that way, if there is a fraudulent charge, they can identify it right away and can act on it very quickly before any additional charges are made. And they can report it and dispute the item immediately so we can get an investigation and a rebate. And then the P card administrator report, audits the transactions for any errors. So at the end of the month, the P card report, the bookkeeper prints out the total of the transactions or the individual transactions in a report, they hand it to their principal along with all the backup documentation and at the school level, the principal must sign off on that and then it is transmitted to the district office. In the district office, the department heads and/or chief officers review monthly P card reports and authorize them. I sign off on the P card reports for the finance department and the technology department each month and food service does not have a card, so they use the finance card. The P card administrator then reviews every transaction, like I mentioned, they flag them and they indicate if there are any, what they believe to be any violation of the P card. We recently established, and Mr. Saunders actually idea, was that we, we were, we have a P card violation process, but it really didn't give the alleged violator an opportunity to respond. So it was more of an opportunity for you, for us to say, here's what we found, here's what the dollar amount is, here's the copy of the transaction, we believe this to be a violation of the code or the P card policy. Can you please respond within 16 days or 30 days to let us know, you know, what, how to, how we would like to respond to this, to this issue. It gives them an opportunity to tell their side of the story and then we can research it further to see if it truly should be listed as a violation. If it is found to warrant a violation letter, then we'll issue a final letter. Then we annually, excuse me, monthly, we review the transparency report, we issue it. The P card deal is paid right around the 25th of the month, so we have basically four to five days, depending on how many businesses, if the weekend falls there, to get the report loaded on the website. There is an expectation that it be loaded in a reasonable timeframe and so we do our best. best to get it by the first of the month. It has to be reviewed by, there are about, at least three, three to five people who are reviewing that report every month. Onsite visits to inspect documentation, we do this periodically, and we're looking for the things that you've seen here before. And then we have our annual external audits, who also take samples of all of our P-cards that are trained. They take a sample, they also take samples of our procurement card program, and any checks that are made there, as well as all of the procurement, they do a specific procurement audit every year as well. So, what we look for when we audit a monthly P-card, we check that there's a receipt for every transaction. We check that the amount on the receipt is the amount that's in work in the Bank of America software. Sales tax is included, and account number is accurate. The detailed description is included, it's an appropriate description. For registration airlines, lodging, approved travel request, and an agenda must be attached. Out-of-state travel must be approved by a chief officer. Principals' travel approved by the chief instructional officer. Purchases of twenty-five hundred or more has free quotes, unless it is exempt, it has an exemption of some kind from procurement. Purchases greater than twenty-five thousand must have my signature on them. And now, the purchases greater than point one percent of the total budget must be authorized by the board. If it's hardware or software, it must have technology's signature on them. So, they have to note, we did this to make sure that they are aware of the software. Can they support it? And do they have the server space to be able to have it if it's on a server? Also, food purchases must be for professional development, agenda and sign-in sheet must be included. And a summary of the P-card document must be signed by the principal, department head, or chief officer. So, training, we have an initial training for principals and bookkeepers where we don't give them the card until they've been trained, making sign-in documents. And then we're given a P-card manual during that initial training. Training, there's also training for new, any new practices that we have, any changes that we make. For example, most recent one would have been more detailed descriptions, might have been a piece of the communication that was made during that training. So, regional P-card summit is also held so that the P-card administrators in our office are able to communicate with others in the area to see what others are doing, what practices they have, policies, and so on. Those are generally in Charleston at the technical college, I believe. We talked about P-card violations, I won't go over that again. And we do have a new, new practice of notification first and giving an opportunity for response before a final letter is written. So, fraud prevention, we have a couple, a series of ways to help prevent fraud of the P-card. We have activity alerts. Anytime a purchase is made, a principal receives an alert on their email, on their phone, or through their email. We have a constant monitoring of account activity, the daily monitoring. We want bookkeepers to go in every day and watch, and see what's being spent, see if there are any unusual transactions. It has, each card have a chip and a PIN number, so it's a dual authentication program. And we have the block and reissue. If we have, see something that is inappropriate, we immediately block the card, and we can do that electronically from home. Even our bookkeepers can do it, excuse me, not our bookkeepers. Our district office P-card administrator can log in from home or their telephone and block a transaction, or block a card, or suspend a card, so that if something happens over the weekend, if someone is alerted to an unusual charge, then we can have the ability from a web-based system to go online and change that right away. For example, during one of the hurricanes, we had the facilities card was used, card number was used for pizza and cab service in Chicago. And everyone was evacuated from, you know, there were no people in the district office making purchases. So, we were able to identify that it was made and immediately block the card. We knew that no one was making purchases through that card service. That was quite close some time ago. So, the VCSD staff, our staff has instituted a series, a series of internal controls, auditing transactions, and we train the staff. So, some advantages. I should be finishing up.
Yes. Let me, let me do this. Since you're on your last piece, I want to make sure that you have had a quick time to prepare for your presentation tonight. So, I'm gonna go ahead, if you don't want to add some presentation. Thank you. Have Rachel and then Dick fire off any questions they may have for you from your presentation.
Sure.
Okay.
So, my first question is about the P-card auditing. And based on my understanding of the flow of the transaction and how it goes from pre-authorization to authorization, it seems to me, based on what I'm seeing here, is that the pre-auth, it goes pre-authorization, and then the purchase, and then the information is provided, then, you know, to the bookkeeper and everything for tracking. So, what happens when it gets to the auditing level is that the only thing that's required is the receipt for the transaction?
The pre-authorization document and the receipt are required as well. And the pre-authorization has, we look for the date to be prior to the purchase. So, the pre-authorization, you saw the picture of it up there, and, and the receipt or invoice is, are both attached. Any documents relating to it would be attached.
Okay. So, when you receive the receipt, the pre-authorization is with it?
Yes. And if it's travel, it has to have the travel request, the agenda, the receipt, and the pre-authorization as well.
Okay. And I did some quick crunching of numbers, and I'm just gonna point out the glaring obvious. Comparing us to, all the comparison of P-card holders, I guess comparable in size would be Aitken County, is that correct? My understanding?
Yes.
Their per-card average is around twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty cents. Beavert County's per-card average is around seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars per card. So, that's based on a district size average. And then if we're gonna look at budget-wise, which, which is the next district that's closest to us in budget? Charleston or Greenfield?
No, neither one of those, they're, they're larger.
Okay. I'm just gonna say that the next, the closest, the next closest one to us per-card average would be Charleston County, and that's at one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars per card. So, we're spending well over six hundred and thirty thousand.
So, what I would, how I would respond to that is, what are, are they using utilities? Are they buying three-page boards and laptops and those sorts of things? So, I think if you look at the locations of the spending, you would probably see that the district office has the largest amount with, because we're paying, on the district office cards have a larger percentage of spending because we have the top ten vendors. We're spending fifty percent of the money on the card and just ten vendors. So, we're, I would be interested to see if those locations, those schools, or those school districts.
What they're spending.
Are they using their card to pay for utilities and telephone bills and laptops and that sort of thing? So, that would put it in a more comparative, you know, sense for us. And we could do an average of what our schools are spending at the school card level and do an average of that, so we could get a better idea. Now, I won't have that information for the other districts, but I could get it for us.
Cause I'm, if, if ten, the ten top vendors or whatnot, and the district level, you're spending about half of what's expended.
Yeah.
Maybe around fifteen million for the district level, fifteen million split amongst.
Well, that, those are just the top ten, so we might have more.
Thirty-one million.
Thirty-one million total, right. But just the top ten vendors are all on the district cards. There will be more in, there could be, there's a number of other vendors. So, I can look at district-level cards and see what the spending is on district-level cards and what some of the vendors are. Maybe, maybe we can analyze what the totals per vendor are there. And then there are school-level cards. But the schools don't have budgets that size. The schools have, might have a couple hundred, thousand-dollar total budget all year long, if that. Some smaller schools like Port Royal might have much smaller, you know, fifty to. Melissa, how much is Port Royal's total budget?
I think, um, the general budget was like, maybe seventy-something, and then we had Title I, which really helped us out, which was, I think, another.
Melissa was bookkeeper at Port Royal Elementary for many years, and, and in the media department. So, so I think we'll, they're limited by the size of their budget as well.
Absolutely.
So, and not all of that budget would have been spent on P-cards. So, but we could take a look and do analysis of district-level cards spending, and then school-level cards. So, that might be helpful.
That might be helpful, yeah. And with regard to P-card violations, how often are you issuing P-card violation letters?
It is, I probably see at least one or so a month. And we are, we are very careful when we do those. One, we wanna do, we wanna be in compliance, and we wanna make sure we're communicating the violation. But it is a very sensitive matter because it doesn't go in the personnel file of the employee. That was something established by Dr. Moss. He wanted to be informed of the violation, and he wanted it in the personnel file, we'd continue that practice, and we would see if the future superintendent would want to continue that as well. But it is something serious, so that way, that's why we revised our policy recently. But not, not a frequent occurrence, but it, it does happen. And all of those go to the auditors annually as well. They wanna know all violations, and they have to provide that pop-up.
Yeah. Tony, the number of fraud instances that you have discovered, discovered in other people, of course, you know, you get a lot of help from other folks to tell you about something you already know. But the number's a little high for the number, for the amount of money that you're spending. And so, one of the things that I'm curious about is instructions on how and what websites they use the P-card on. Now, if you use your webs, if you use your personal credit card on Amazon, according to Wired Magazine, Amazon spends more on security. They spend hundreds of millions of dollars a year. So, you can be pretty sure that if you buy something through Amazon, that your data is not gonna be given to some scammer. Some other websites, you see a nice ad, and you say, boy, I want it, teacher wants to get this for the classroom, and it's the XYZ dot com. Not so much. So, do you have restrictions on what websites your schools are allowed to use P-cards on?
I am not aware of any from the, restrictions from the procurement office. But the technology office restricts our, our access to many, many areas. So, I'm not aware of any from the procurement office.
I believe that that's something in the training, that you're gonna have to make sure people understand, just like all of us should when we buy things online, of where you buy it from. Because everybody has different security in their own data. And once you give your card a number and everything else, who knows who gets it from The vendors, the which vendors you use it from? Are there any other credit cards other than P-cards?
We do have gas cards.
Gas cards.
Yes. And they're held in the facilities office. And each athletic, high school athletic director has a gas card. Because the gas for, the fuel for athletics events has to be, have to have the capability of fueling the athletic activity buses.
How about?
And driver's ed vehicles when, when appropriate. Not every school has driver's ed.
Superintendent have a credit card?
The superintendent's assistant has a credit card. The current superintendent does not hold a P-card.
Is it?
No, just a P-card.
A P-card, okay.
It's P-card, yes.
All right. Use PayPal?
We did some research, and there, I believe that there were two schools that were, did have an open PayPal account, PayPal account, and we asked them to remove that, so.
Good, good. Okay, let's go to physical control of the cards.
And recently, we asked for every bookkeeper, we required them to, anytime the credit card is saved in the file, we wanted to make sure that that was no longer in place. So, we have a practice of prohibiting that from being saved in the computer for any reason.
Okay. Physical control of cards. I have had anecdotes given to me about standing in line at a grocery store.
I love this story.
Person behind was getting impatient because the person at the checkout said, oh, I used the wrong card. I used my district card, and I need you to cancel that payment, so I can put my personal card in there, but cancel it for the district. That's good that she did that. Bad was, why did she have a card in her wallet that she picked out by mistake? Those cards, as your policy says, are under lock and key. They should not be in anybody's wallet purse or otherwise, correct?
That's correct. Unless they're in the middle of an errand, going to get something. So, that is possible to do that.
But it's there and back, and that's it. And locked, right?
Yes, it should be, yes.
And who has, who has access to?
They would have a key, and one other person in the building, it normally is the principal or a fourth member.
That is, whenever you have a card and you're, you know, a family member, there's all kinds of bad things can happen. That, those cards should not go home. Those cards should be kept under lock and key. And, and the data. And when they purchase, they don't go to a restaurant, I'm sure they don't go to restaurants, but they don't ever give a card to somebody to run it on someplace else. If they don't see, they don't swipe it themselves, they don't buy it. I mean, that, that's the kind of specificity.
We prohibit the use of the card overnight, so it cannot be taken home overnight. So, that is very clear in the training we have.
Also, about not having the card leave their hands. You know, you can maybe give it to the clerk, so you swipe it, but that's it.
Right.
Okay.
Now, I think that hotels and that sort of thing, the travel is, is a problem. We don't allow the card to go to the hotel, or to the individuals to travel with a card.
Right.
You have to purchase in advance, but you have to provide a credit card number, and they write it. You have to fill out an authorization form which has the card number on it. So, it's on a piece of paper in a hotel, which many of do not receive any form of payment with, except for a credit card. So, that is a risk as well.
Right. They just have to understand the risk. Okay. Bookkeepers, cardholders, background checks?
To my knowledge, new bookkeepers are getting a background check, but I'm not aware of any past or, or assistance.
How about annual credit check?
They are not, no.
Should be. If you, if you have a card, you should have an annual credit check. And that, that goes, I think, to not only the card, but also the whoever is the principal or whatever. That's how you find people that have been about to have temptation to do bad things. They bad, sometime, all of a sudden, they blow up in their credit report.
Oh, they're gonna lose.
That's, that's the thing, should be looked at. I don't suppose they're bonding.
No. Well, we don't have, our insurance policy does not have, we don't have bonded employees. They are covered under a policy. I've asked that question of our insurance agent, insurance expert before. Under theft and something else.
A separate, separate manner, chairman, I'd like at a future time, we talk about use of the rebate, and rebate, not rebate. Use of the rebate from a P-card.
That's a good segue into my first question.
I, I think we have critics that say we should go back to writing checks and everything else, and that, those are people that don't understand the business world. You're gonna continue to use this, your rebate is gonna continue to come in, and that's, that's good. That's basically a tax on your vendor, so that, and we're getting, we're getting a kickback on the tax that the vendor's paying. So, there's nothing wrong with it, but it's not budgeted, correct?
What's not budgeted?
The projected revenue from the rebate.
It is not budgeted in the operating fund currently, no.
But it's not, it's not considered as a revenue when you do your budget correct? So, it's foul money, right?
It is. It is separated, yes, and for future use for, by board.
Okay.
It could be moved back to, into, or deposited into and be part of that budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, all good questions. Um, the rebates, uh, this is a philosophical question. In the district's efforts to increase those rebates, are we in fact, um, um, elevating our discretionary spending to an unhealthy degree? If our goal is to increase those rebates?
Um, I don't really see it that way. Uh, I see it as purchasing the supplies, business supplies that we need on a daily basis. It gives us easier, quicker access to be able to get those materials. Um, we have controls, oh, in place to, um, control that spending. They have budgets, first of all, and then we have to, we've required, we have internal controls and policies in place that require that they have for partic, food for particular items or, or events. And, um, so I think the controls are, um, do minimize that to some extent, but, uh, as far as travel goes, uh, I think there could be some, um, I, it, it's not, I don't think, see it as a policy of the P card or a, um, something that's come out of the P card. I think it's inherent in the, any spending in the district. So, if, if the board wishes to tighten controls in certain areas, then, um, we can find ways to do that. And limiting budgets is the perfect way to do that, so. Um, or, you know, we can have, come up with some other ways. But I don't think the P card is the, the inherent, um, reason for more spending in one area or the other.
I got you, limiting budgets. Um, so anytime the board utilizes or redirects our, um, P card rebates, is a board that are required? I found a set of minutes from 2015 and the board voted to, um, redirect $371,000, um, u- using, not redirect, using the rebates, um, to help build our storage unit here, uh, at the, at the district office. Now, I'm looking at the numbers here for rebates on, on slide, um, well, on page eight, I guess it is. And obviously, that was 2015, um, at, was that a combined, a couple of years combined of rebates that the board applied to that or?
The board voted in, um, when was the vote, October, that year for $371,000? At the time that year of that, um, the information was provided to the board, the information that we received was that we would receive a $371,000 rebate.
Okay.
By the time we received the rebate, it, the state chose to deduct a portion of the proceeds for their share and the ending amount that we received was $317,000. So, we chose to transfer only the amount that the, we received and not the full $371,000. So, even, and those, that combined with two years of rental income that were actually received and voted on by the board, um, the combination of the two was about a million dollars. And fortunately, the project construction of the maintenance warehouse came in, those numbers came in that, under that million dollar number. So, so even without the difference there, we were able to still come in under budget.
I got you. So, so the board, um, designated that $371,000 through a vote, uh, but we only received $317,163. What happened to those additional funds in there? That was board action?
The state took them. Um, we didn't transfer money we didn't have or use money we didn't have, so, um, nothing, we never received the money, so there was really nothing to do with it. So we just did not spend the difference.
Okay. Must the board, is the board required to vote anytime we direct those rebates to a project? What are the guidelines there?
There are, there are none. Um, that is a, that is a, a feeling, a, um, a practice that the, the former chief financial officer, Mina, that she felt that they were, they were put, they were the size that they needed to be separated. And she went specifically to the board and requested to use those funds for a particular purpose. So, um, since then, the funds have continued to be put in that account and are only used when the board approves. So I've continued that practice, I, they're, they'll remain in there, so.
Okay. So as of right now, that practice is no longer in use for the board vote, so that, correct?
Um, well, no, I recently came to the board about the timekeeping software and so that was the use of the most recent funds, so.
That's right, thank you.
So, um, it's not something, of course, they're at the level now where they will require board vote. So, if, if it were a one-time purchase and then if it were, um, so, um, I wouldn't touch that without consulting with the board force. So it's not a written practice, but it is an inherent practice that I would continue.
So we might wanna consider a policy or recommend a policy at some point in time that the board does vote on the rebates and, and how they're, you know, I know you're already doing it, but.
And putting them separately gives the board some flexibility in years where we really do need any operation budget, we can move it back. Or it allows for carryover into a future year. So you can accumulate, say, two years of funds to be able to do something in particular that's not, are already budgeted for some purpose. So, it does give the board flexibility, so.
The account that they're put into, what kind of account is it? Is it, I think, um, an interest-bearing account?
It's a capital, um, account, general ledger account in our accounting system. And the funds go to, in the county treasurer's office, yes. We have a bank account, but it, the majority of the funds reside with the treasurer, yeah. Ours is just for emergencies to pay for.
Yeah, they're making all, they're making a lot.
We, uh, do get a portion, an interest allocation every year, yes. And, uh, it was about $500,000 last year in the general, um, general fund. So we do receive an interest.
They're doing a better job of investing.
Yeah.
The county is, we're giving larger, um, amount of pension.
Yes, but the last, we have had an uptick in interest income in the last year, so.
Okay, I have one last question and then we'll wrap up with future agenda topics and you can prepare for the presentation. Auditing, the state has a requirement that we have to audit, uh, our P cards, isn't that correct? Is it every three years? What's the interval?
Um, it's actually procurement audit. It is required every three years and we choose to do it, many districts require to do it every year. Uh, if, if it were every, even though it were every three years, they do audit three years of data. But we, so we choose to do it every year because we wanna have consistent staff that knows what happened three years ago. We wanna have documentation on hand and not missing, so it's harder to capture that data and remember things that happened three years ago. So, uh, we choose to audit, um, have that piece of our, it, our audit has multiple components.
With Elliot Davis, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, any audit contract we would have, we would, uh, put that as a piece of, of our auditing services.
And does what Elliot Davis is doing, uh, does that meet all the requirements of the state for our procurement audit? Okay, and where can members of the community find those procurement audits?
Um, it's only an audit opinion, they don't publicize their auditing work papers. Um, so the audit opinion, uh, I'm not sure if we put, placed that on the, uh, website, website this past year. I can't remember, I know we have had audit opinions out in the past. Yeah, the financial statements out there and the audit opinion letter is in the, in the body of the financial report, so.
And, and that satisfies the state's requirements?
Uh, it, it, yes. There are multiple requirements at the state level, they have to comply with the single audit. Uh, it's a federal audit, audit guide, state audit guide, uh, it, state, not federal, excuse me. But there are some federal requirements, there is a, a document in the back. Um, the single audit, right, is very specific and, uh, Billy's a former auditor, so he can probably lend some more information on that. But, um, single audit's very specific on what they are supposed to audit, how they do their work, it guides their work. Uh, they're supposed to build an audit program to look for certain things. And in that, they have to take samples and procurement is one of those areas. When our, uh, our P card spending began to expand, we made sure that they were looking not just at checks. They had to, they changed their audit program to make sure that they're equally looking at same numbers or, uh, taking samples of the procurement card as well. So they look at both checks and card. And so, uh, all, much of our data is now in our financial software. We've gone paperless with regard to, um, checks and our P card system. So we can actually give the auditors account number and password and allow them to go in and see the documents for themselves. So they can see it firsthand without us, um, you know, pulling documents and then filing them back. They have access directly to them themselves.
Okay, thank you.
One last, and then we'll move. What is the sample size for that procurement audit?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, I can?
Yeah, I'd just be interested to know how much data that you can look at and how to test that.
Well, the sampling of the P card we do is very small, right? It's negligible, yeah, it's worthless more than, I mean, it's a small, small sampling comparatively.
Based on that, I'd like to move to make a recommendation. Um, I think because the sample size is so small, um, you should maybe go for our PR bid on getting a procurement audit that is a 100% sample size. It might be expensive? It might be expensive, but it doesn't hurt.
Well, but there's not, not only the dollar amount, it's, it's also the disruptive effect of doing that. That would completely consume the finance department for.
I thought it was all electronic.
It, it, it is electronic, but they're gonna go by and they're gonna say, what about this electronic entry? What about that electronic entry? It would consume a finance department for months to do a 100% audit.
I'm gonna go ahead and second the motion for discussion, for discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so we have, we, let's, let's look back at this audit that was, the P card audit that was actually worthless. It was worthless because it was take thousands of P card transactions and take a percentage wrong. What you should have done is take a look at bookkeepers. You're not gonna find a lot of problems in the big dollars. You're gonna find, where we had a problem was at a bookkeeper. That's, that's where you need to have focused audits. And then the next year, you don't look at bookkeepers, you look at facilities. And the next, and you, and then that's kind of a rotating, surprise, surprise, facilities, you're gonna be audited. And you do it, a different one every year. That way, you, no one knows, it has that effect of being, um, I'm not, I, I don't know what's going on, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be honest because I don't know when I'm gonna get audited without having to do a big audit. People that say do a big audit, don't understand. If you've ever been through one, you don't ever wanna go through one again if you're doing.
When was the last time we had one?
Well, procurement, you're talking about procurement, not just the P card.
Right.
Procurement, the whole procurement, controls, everything, is it, is that?
Was the last one, was on?
Well, that one was a limited, they did one year's worth of our P card, uh, transactions, correct? Um, so it was limited to one year and it was very, it, it was narrow. And as such, it lost the support of some board members. They wanted something more comprehensive. Um, but it, it came back clean for that one year and it was just P card transactions. I think the state's procurement, um, audit is really much more encompassing than that.
And I, I think, um, I think you may, we may need to bring auditors and help them, help you understand what an audit is all about and how they choose their sample. And it's not just about sample, it's about talking to people, interviewing people. It's about, um, looking at transactions many different ways. They do take it from the general ledger level all the way back to the bookkeeper level, um, to the documents. They start from the documents and go back to the general ledger. Is it going into the right account and is it in opposite direction? So they look at it many, many different ways and I think it might be a good idea if we, this year, we have the auditors maybe come and educate you a little bit on how they develop, what guides their work and how they do their audit. So, just to help understand. Um, but, uh, the audit, the extra audit, the extra audit was $63,000 that was done on the P card and that was on a series of samples.
Yeah, that was limited.
Um, and our annual audit is budgeted at $55,000. Uh, and that's the compilation of financial statements and everything, the document for federal and state requirements and everything, so.
So, so, but, uh, in my understanding, you, you wanna see something more comprehensive surrounding the whole, uh, procurement umbrella, correct?
Well, yeah, just based on, I mean, I got a little confused because you were referring to the P card sample size and when I asked her about sample size, she wasn't sure if she was gonna let me know. So, I got confused in what sample size was actually small.
Well, in our, in our annual audit that Elliot Davis does, that P card sampling is real small. But the board went out and did a separate audit, um, last year. And it was to study the transactions of our P cards for one year, a finite period. And that sampling was much larger, but still small comparatively, yes, that, that is. Small comparatively to the transactions we do, um, district-wide and, you know. So, uh, but do I understand what you're proposing as what I, I just wanna understand so I know how to vote here?
Yeah, I'm actually going to, I, I'd like to table it until we get some more information from Tonya on the sample size that is the sample size for the procurement audit that passed through. Cause I just wanna make sure that, uh, having an audit done on a yearly basis or every three years or something like that, I wanna make sure it's not worthless.
Can we add that to our agenda for next, next meeting?
Alright, let's move on to our next agenda topic, our final topic, which is our June, um, finance meeting. Uh, at our previous meeting, yes, Tina.
So I'd like to clarify something, the, the P card audit that the board, uh, did last year was only on about 270 transactions for all the P cards.
So it was one year, but only 200 and something like that.
About 20,000.
For $63,000.
For $63,000, yep. Yep, there you go.
Alright, well, well, you never know. Um, so, we had discussed in our previous meeting for June, it was time for our quarterly, um, budget variation report. So we had agreed to look at that. I, I would like to see us delve a little more deeply into our procurement code. It's a big document, we would have a good solid month to really familiarize us ourselves with the guidelines in there. That's my personal, um, feeling that we need to tackle that sooner rather than later.
I wanna mention something, uh, the state is actually, uh, considering and, and is very close to passing a new procurement code, which will actually raise thresholds. So the $2,500 threshold would now be $10,000 and so on. So if that is the case, we may have to adopt the state code depending on their requirements. So, uh, we can provide an update at that meeting of what the change is going to, how it will affect us and what, um, how that differs from the existing code, if that is the case. But that may change everything, so I don't know that I would agree every line on it because you might, and that actually change very soon.
Exactly, but we're, aren't we like currently grandfathered into what we have of the change?
Well, it's up to the state and all the extent of the changes that they made in their code. So if it's just the spending thresholds that they're looking at, they have possibility of allowing us a waiver to stay with our grandfathering in. But if they are making extensive changes throughout their code, they may require us to adopt their code and everyone else in the dis, in the state, statewide, so. Uh, so it may be a major change for us and we need to know what the impact of that may be.
Got you. Um, so that's all we have for June.
Yeah, can I add, add one small thing?
Yeah.
I'd like to revisit the budget development process timeline. Because I don't think we had enough time.
We already have plans for, for starting a little sooner next year.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just like to start, I mean.
Just a review of that.
Review what it is now, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have the quarterly budget variance report, we have a review of the proposed new, um, budget, um, development timeline. And what was ordered through the procurement code.
Procurement code.
Um, I think that's more than enough for an hour, for an hour and a half.
I'd like to just say something, not maybe for June, maybe for July, but I'd like to continue on the audits that we've been doing at the different programs, district-wise, since we now have John Lerner, Sir Leader of Me, Dave NID, um, maybe whatever Tonya thinks, just, I mean, I have no preference in what more we go in, just as long as we do all of them and we pass the information along.
We'll go down maybe for Jelani.
Yeah. And we're not putting it on the radar.
Yes, but, okay. Alright, and that's, Jelani?
Yes.
Where do you all want to have the June meeting?
June meeting Hilton Head Library. So we'll try to, try to continue with that alternating, north of the Broad Sound.
At five o'clock or?
By the Combe. And Robin, in case you don't know, Rachel Tebow to the motion.
I got it, what you got.
All right, do we have a motion for June?
A second.